Well, we did some discussion of that. No, in fact, it probably should not be the board clerk. It should be a sitting board member who's already taken the oath.
Oh, okay.
There's been a number of things that.
So, just to clarify, what we usually had to do was turn over operations to the board clerk and she would facilitate the meeting until the board president was elected. But Sean was just saying that we spoke to our legal counsel that said actually it should be a already sworn in sitting board member to facilitate the meeting, so.
And also to administer the oath to the clerk?
I administer the oath.
Oh, cuz the, well, cuz the clerk has to have an oath to administer.
That's true.
Right. Hey, Chris, why aren't you running meetings?
Huh?
Why don't you run the meetings before the election?
Well, it's gonna be.
So then as soon as we administer, oh, she's back and, you know.
No, no. Like a meeting person can facilitate until we find.
Okay.
Until we elect her.
So this is gonna be a little bit wonky.
Got it. Got it.
It is, and we're gonna be doing some things differently while we're taking notes.
We're checking page two, there's a recommended version.
To, to change policy, but the, the way in which we do open the meeting first.
Right.
Aaron, can you hear us? Okay. Perfect. Um, but the clerk does open the meeting. So we're probably gonna just walk through this verbally as we go along, folks, if that is correct. Um, is everybody ready?
Yeah. Good morning, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Motion to nominate Sean, Dr. Sean Eversley Bradwell, sitting board member to serve as temporary chairperson until the president is elected.
Second.
You need your vote. Over your tray for the motion. So you have to do a roll, or we can just do a raise of hands.
Well, I guess we have to do a roll in this one, at least one person virtual.
Oh, okay.
Erin Crowell?
Yes.
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Yep.
Moira Lane?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Sean Eversley Bradwell?
Awkwardly yes.
I'm sorry, Jill Tripp?
No, can't vote.
Yeah, not yet.
She can't vote yet.
So it's just Pat.
And Pat, Patricia Wazin?
Yes.
Um, fantastic, and we're gonna talk about some of the changes, but to begin with, we're gonna do the appointment of the clerk, um, agenda item one point four. And, uh, so, uh, I will administer the oath to the clerk. Um, and do we say it, repeat after me, is that what we've historically done, or we just have the?
I, I think so, yeah. Or, or read it.
Just have the clerk.
I guess you could just read it.
Yes.
Yeah, have heard what you said. I, Tricia Berisford, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the clerk of the Board of Education of Ithaca City School District according to the best of my ability.
Fantastic. Thank you for all your work, Tricia, uh, and the grind. Um, the next, uh, agenda item is the administration of the oath of the Office of Superintendent and elected board members. And we'll begin with the oath for the superintendent.
First, a question, I mean, not to get too technical, but are we supposed to move and second these resolutions or just do them?
Uh, that is a great question. When I went through the agenda, I, I had not thought about what we probably should.
So we'll move every single one?
Well, I, do we have to move an oath of office, though? This is, this is someone's oath, I don't. It's not an action.
We have not.
Well, it's the resolution to make him sit as superintendent that we need to approve.
That's good.
And then he takes the oath.
That's good. Uh, but it will not happen for the new school board member, so I don't think it's something we vote on.
Okay, yeah, that wouldn't make any sense, right.
I understand. Yeah. Uh, we'll get, we'll get clarity.
This is the administration of the.
We'll get clarity on it later on, but for the time being, you just read it.
Yeah.
It's not me, this is a.
This is a.
Okay.
Resolution.
Cool, it's just the administration of.
I, Dr. Lou Bell Brown, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of the Superintendent of Schools according to my best, uh, the best of my.
Fantastic, awkward.
There, there are resolutions for Tricia Berisford and Dr. Lou Bell Brown, do you think we should just backtrack? It's a resolution, but there's no motion. Oh, yeah, recommended action. Do we want to back, there is a recommended action here. And a, but not here.
Right, for the clerk and for the superintendent, there is a resolution or be resolved.
Right.
So, if we feel like for procedural reasons we should backtrack and take a vote on both those, we absolutely can. I don't know that we need to have a person read their oath again. But, so, just as a matter of procedure, um, go ahead, Chris.
No, I, let's do it.
So, we will vote on the, um, motion for the clerk. So be resolved that Tricia Berisford be and hereby is designated the clerk of the Ithaca City School District of Ithaca for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. And it's probably proven for me to do the role call at this point in time, not the clerk. So, Erin, we are backtracking, I don't know if you can hear all that.
I can.
So, voting on the motion for the, uh, district clerk.
To appoint Tricia Berisford as the clerk of the Ithaca City School District for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year.
Erin.
Oh, I need a second.
Oh, okay, that was moving.
I, I'm moving.
Now it's moving.
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Dr. Patricia Wazin?
Yes.
Moira?
Yes.
Eldred?
I'm thinking about it.
Yes.
And Sean, yes. All right.
Okay, and I will move, um, item, where am I? Uh, uh.
Item two point one?
Item two point one, resolved, that Dr. Lou Bell Brown be and hereby is designated the superintendent of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York, for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Second.
And Tricia, you can call the vote.
Erin Crowell?
Yes.
Dr. Sean Eversley Bradwell?
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Yes.
Moira Lane?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Dr. Patricia Wazin?
Yes.
Okay.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Thank you. This is only my twelfth time at Rupus, so you can see that we're operating at a really high level.
But this is a totally different operation than we've ever done before.
Yeah.
Right, so now we are moving on to agenda item two point two, which is a motion for the administration of oath of office to elected board members. And, uh, I will hand this over to Tricia to administer the oath.
Erin, can you hear me?
Can.
Okay. The elected Board of Education member Erin Crowell has been elected to a three-year term to the Board of Education of Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York, for the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five school years, and you may read your oath.
I, Erin Crowell, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of the Board of Education Member according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Elected, uh, board member Jill Tripp has been elected to a three-year term to the Board of Education of the Ithaca, of Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York, for the twenty twenty-two, the twenty twenty-five school year, and Jill may read your oath.
I, Jill Tripp, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Board of Education Member according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Well done.
Elected Board of Education member Karen Yearwood has been elected to a three-year term to the Board of Education of Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York, for the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five school year, and Karen Moon may read your oath.
I, Karen Yearwood, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Board of Education Member according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to all of you.
Uh, looking forward to the work ahead, everybody. Um, historically, we have also, this is part of the reason why we have, uh, note cards here. Historically, we have elected our board officers, uh, for lack of a better word, by secret ballot. I'm doing some research and talking to our legal team, realizing that a school district or a school board under no circumstances could vote by secret ballot. And so it is a public vote, following Robert's rules, there'd be a nomination, a second discussion, and then voting. If that nomination does not pass, then we continue to, till we can find, uh, a board president and a board vice president. But this will be a public vote for whoever is nominated. So that's where we find ourselves, so you can, these are just gifts, uh, for a volunteer position.
Lovely voting gift, or lovely welcome gift.
Right, so, uh.
That's so funny, yeah. And we meet that ground, go for pens.
Yeah, it's only with, there are two. Right, and pens. So, for agenda item three point one, uh, we will entertain nominations for president of the board.
I nominate Sean Eversley Bradwell.
Second.
Uh, discussion.
Oh. Uh, are you willing to do it?
That. I think that, that was my spouse saying to me not to do it.
On cue, uh, I would say, I should, uh, I feel so strongly that Sean has exactly the set of skills needed to be board president. He has the experience, he has the temperament, uh, and, um, his willingness to, uh, to do so much for the school district has, uh, been a valued asset, uh, for many years now.
And I, I will add that, um, for those, uh, new colleagues who are not aware of this, Sean has chaired the Policy Committee for the Board since at least a year, possibly two years before I was on the board, because I used to attend Policy Committee as a member of PTA Council. And, um, his expert, expertise in policy and in, um, checking with the New York State School Boards Association and New York State Education Law, expertise in both parliamentary procedure and his preference for consensus building as a means to conflict resolution is, I think, are all valuable skills, um, that I see as really unparalleled among board members. And it is a position that requires a lot of attention to procedure and attention to fairness.
And he has a prodigious memory for policy, particularly.
Well, you see how well our procedure has started this morning.
Just due to the fact that you did the homework to update, oh, both of you, you and Moira, to update our procedures and make sure that we are, you know, following proper protocols. And having held the position as vice president of the board and knowing what it entails and seeing the amount that you have done over and above what I did in that role, uh, is impressive, so I can't say enough for you to hold the role of president.
I'll just add that, uh, you know, you look around this table, this group probably has hundreds of years of high-level volunteer experience in this community and beyond. Our budget is the largest budget in this area, once you subtract the federal Medicaid and Medicare funds from the county. So, this is no small task. Hurting these cats is no small task. Board president's job is to make sure we get out of our own way. Sean does that very well already, as well as vice president. And, uh, I, I expect that he will continue to do it, although hurting me is gonna be challenging as usual, but I think the rum is up to it.
I, I will never say this again, but I hope that's the end of the discussion.
Yeah.
Should we call the roll?
I'll call the roll.
Erin Crowell?
Yes.
Dr. Sean Eversley Bradwell?
I'm going to abstain.
Eldred Harris?
Yes.
Moira Lane?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Dr. Patricia Wazin?
I'm, I'm.
Jill and. They can sworn in.
Now they can.
We're gonna get it. We're good.
Did I call Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Yes, you did.
Uh, Jill, Dr. Jill Tripp?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Karen Yearwood?
Yes.
Patricia Wazin?
Yes. But just, just for the record, someone now is on the board with a last name who's, who comes after W. So after eleven years of being the last person on this board to vote, I see my place as a pinch hitter to Karen Yearwood.
Actually, it's interesting that in the research that Sean and I were both doing, we came across a number of things. One is about the order of voting. And now we can choose the order of voting, it doesn't have to be alphabetical. And many boards do a rotating, uh, one, in part with the idea that, you know, that there shouldn't always be the first person to vote be the same person, so we might wanna think about that.
That's something we should definitely entertain, that's, that's. But the administration of the oath, I'm gonna go ahead and read if that's okay for folks.
Yes.
I, Sean Eversley Bradwell, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of President of the Board of Education according to the best of my abilities.
Fantastic.
No.
Oh, yes, you were.
Uh, I'm greatly appreciative of the, um, faith, uh, moving forward, and I'm looking forward to the work that we have to do. I know I keep saying that, but, that's, I would thank you. Uh, next is the nomination for Vice President of the Board of Education.
I nominate Moira Lane for Vice President.
Second.
You guys work that out.
Uh, discussion.
Um, I have been so impressed, uh, with Moira's ability to navigate difficult conversations, but also keep us on task, but, and, uh, it's, it's for selfish reasons, because I had the benefit, when I came on the board, I had Judy Maxwell, um, former teacher to help me get acclimated, understand what education looked like, understand what teaching looked like, and Moira was able to fill that role very well. Um, my other road buddy to go visit schools with and, you know, have that relationship with, with different buildings and teachers. Um, so that experience, as well as coming on the board and navigating other, um, situations, just, uh, I, I have more to say, but I don't want to divulge, so.
Um, I will, I will add comments that, that largely echo what Chris has said. Um, ever since Moira came on the board, um, she has been just so reliable, so dedicated, um, has put in a great deal of time. I would, I will say honestly, more time than I could put in, uh, meeting with, with committees, meeting, working on the, uh, retiree insurance issues that come up, uh, doing work on policy. And as, as with all longtime school district members who at one point served on the board, she brings a wealth of understanding of the complexities of this district from the, this, the teacher and employee side and, and the student side as well. And, um, I am confident that she will do a wonderful job in discharging the duties of Vice President.
I'll, I'll just add, Moira, I'm mad at you because you set a bar that I may never be able to reach, participating in a difficult conversation, a long conversation while on vacation in Portugal. At midnight.
Midnight in Portugal.
Midnight in Portugal, so.
It's the name of a song.
That's, that's, that's kind of dedication we expect you to do, so, yeah, too.
I hope that's the end of the question.
Should we vote?
Oh, must have, must have been still discussions. Okay.
Erin Crowell?
No.
Dr. Sean Eversley Bradwell?
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Yes.
Moira Lane?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Jill Tripp?
Yes.
Karen Yearwood?
Yes.
Patricia Wazin?
Yes.
Uh, next item, that motion carries. Uh, congratulations, Moira, the oath is.
Right, Karen. Well, you're, please go into the work, and also, you know, people comment on the time I put in. I am retired, um, and, uh, and so I really look forward to working with Sean, you know. He, as well as other members of this board that I've worked with for seven years, have been, you know, role models and mentors to me. Uh, I've learned so much in the last seven years and, um, from all of you. And, uh, you know, I, I have the time, so I, when I was encouraging Sean to accept my nomination as president, I was assuring him that I will do whatever I can to, you know, shoulder some of the, the, you know, time, uh, demands, um, that to, uh, relieve him, who has a very demanding real job with pay.
I don't know if I call it pay. Very kind, uh, and Moira, you also have to take your oath as well.
Oh, okay. I, yeah. Okay, I got it. Um, I, Moira Lane, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Fantastic, fantastic. So this is the team that we have, uh, in case there's any questions about why Eldred Harris did not take the oath today. Um, within thirty days of the election, um, Eldred Harris was required to take the oath for the completion of the term, and that happened a couple board weeks ago. So Eldred has already been sworn in for the remainder of the term that he is serving, so just wanted to make sure folks have that. Um, the next parts of the agenda, some of it is, again, you know, procedural and parliamentary, I will try to explain. We also have, uh, our, uh, central admin team here who can answer any questions that folks have. Um, for new board members, again, at any point in time, please feel free to ask questions about, um, what we're doing. So, next up on the agenda is, um, item five point one, appointment of the treasurer. And the motion is resolved that Emily should be and hereby is appointed treasurer of the Ithaca City School District for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year.
So, did you move that?
I did not, I was just reading it so folks could.
Okay.
I, I moved to approve the following district officer appointment as far as, oh, several appointments apparently.
There are, and I think we should go through each one.
Okay, I move to approve, um, the, that, um, Emily should be and hereby be appointed treasurer of the Ithaca City School District as part of the annual organizational agenda.
Second.
Second.
And these are all votes. Um, again, normally we would do them in faxes, but I think it's prudent for us to go through each one, so we, in case there's any questions. So, discussion?
I'm gonna be doing a fabulous job.
That's great, good job. We'd sit in on a finance meeting, um, and Emily was, uh, instrumental when we started updating information sharing. She added descriptors to all our transactions, um, just any money that gets moved around, the reason why, uh, when we do it, if there's anything, um, also there's changes throughout the year, so if it's adjusted from a previous, um, transaction, she makes sure that's updated. Um, and respectfully so, she's also taken it out of, um, financial accounting, um, jargon to make it so everybody can understand, which I really appreciate.
I concur and agree. Additional discussion?
I just wanna add that, um, we're volunteers, the last time I checked, we don't get paid. Um, our capacity is to do these jobs well, really, um, only to the extent that the people who support us make our job easier. And this role is a critical role in understanding the complexities of a hundred and fifty million dollar budget, so. I really thank our treasurer, who's boss of the table, and look forward to working with you again in another, probably even more challenging financial year.
Uh, Tricia, will you call the vote?
Erin Crowell?
Yes.
Dr. Sean Eversley Bradwell?
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Yes.
Moira Lane?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Dr. Jill Tripp?
Yes.
Karen Yearwood?
Yes.
Dr. Patricia Wazin?
Yes.
Motion carries, uh, Emily, you take the oath. Is Emily here?
Emily's in her office, but we will administer the oath.
Fantastic. Appointment of tax collector, item five point two. So, go ahead.
I will move, uh, five point two, appointment of tax collector, resolve that Chief Operations Officer Amanda Verba be hereby is appointed tax collector of the Ithaca City School District of New York for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Also doing a family show.
And she has held this role for the last.
Entire time.
Entire time, so this, this is nothing new, this is very procedural, um, and, uh, I can't say enough about what Amanda does, but, um, yeah, you just, that's it. Sorry, Amanda.
The only thing I'll add is Amanda, I'm gonna get a plaque made for you morning, so you can keep in your office that says, "I'm here to get to yes."
Yeah, yeah.
"I'm here to get to yes." That is such an incredibly refreshing thing to hear in New York, a person who's controlling the finances.
Fantastic, and at some point in time, I'd like to have a conversation with the board, if that makes sense for us to say, all in favor and raise our hands, and all votes in all votes' name.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Which is what we're good for us to do, if that works for everybody. We'll just ask Tricia to make sure that we're collecting the votes. Does, does that work with the votes?
Yeah.
So, all in favor? All opposed? Any extensions? You know, Chris Malcolm is up, fantastic. Item five point three.
I have a question.
Yes.
Cuz going back when the vice president was not elected, it says that the vice president assumes the chair immediately upon election at this point, or?
That's. I, I, I saw that, uh, and it's a mistake.
I think it means will folk, will assume the positions immediately, um, immediately upon election? Like you will, you will fulfill that office, assumes the office?
Yeah, it would make sense if you were voted first, before the president.
Right, yeah.
Uh, yes, I think that is a, an error, and we will make sure it is.
And if something were to happen to Sean in this room during this meeting, Moira would assume the presidency.
Immediately.
I step out for a second, we're having this conversation.
Yeah.
Everything, everything, Chris, it's, no, it's, yeah, um, Karen has, had noted the, the, uh, language that the vice president will assume chair immediately upon election, and do you believe that that is an error?
Yeah.
Because it said elected board president will assume chair immediately upon election on page two, three.
I think we resolved that.
Yeah.
Item five point three, appointment of claims auditor.
I move item five point three, that, uh, Haley Johnson be and hereby is appointed claims auditor of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York, for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year.
Second.
Any discussion? So we can move, voting all in favor? You're gonna catch it. All opposed? No tensions, fantastic. Moving to agenda, item six, uh, six point one, the employment of purchasing agents.
Uh, six point one, appointment of purchasing agent, uh, resolve that Amanda Verba, Chief Operations Officer, and Sidney Wade, Assistant School Business Executive, be and hereby appointed purchasing agent of the School District of Ithaca, New York for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, and may be authorized to purchase supplies and equipment for services as provided in the budget. Um, and as we spoke to earlier, these are, um, procedural and both have facilitated this in years past.
I second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? That is everybody. Passes, uh, six point two, appointment of Deputy Treasurer.
I'll move item six point two, that Sidney Wade be and hereby is appointed Deputy Treasurer of the Ithaca City School District of Ithaca, New York for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor? That is everybody, motion passes. Six point three, appointment of Deputy Claims Auditor.
Um, I will move that Amy Augustin be and hereby be appointed Deputy Claims Auditor of the Ithaca City School District of Ithaca, New York for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, appointment of the Records Access Officer.
I will move six point five, uh, Dan Bryman, Administration Officer, be hereby is appointed the Records Access Officer of the Ithaca City School District of, of New York for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year.
Second.
Questions or discussion?
Um, confused, we're on six four or six five?
Six five.
No, we're on six four.
Six four.
Oh, I, I apologize, yes.
But you did say Records Access Officer, and you named Dan Bryman, right?
I did, so. I apologize.
That's all right.
And that involves FOIL, correct?
No, y- yes, we're, we're, we're on the right, right? Right, so the Records Access Officer is the person who is primarily responsible for responding to FOIL requests that a district receives.
Yes, I apologize.
No, you didn't, we're.
Oh, I was right.
Yeah. I was wrong, it should just be six point five, if you.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Only comment is that Dan is the right member.
All opposed?
And that's a compliment.
That's a, yes.
I, I don't enjoy hearing that. Item six point five, Appointment of Records Management Officer.
I'll move item six point five, that Paul Alexander, the Director of Facilities and Operations, be and hereby is appointed the Records Management Officer of the Ithaca City School District of Ithaca, New York for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year.
Second.
Questions or discussion?
Just have one question for five, six, six, and, yep, I guess it's five and six, is that the correct item?
Record.
There are facilities and operations, that's still the current, right?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah.
It is.
Oh.
Okay, what is, then can I ask what is Heather's title?
Coordinator of the Building?
Coordinate.
Coordinator?
Coordinator, thanks, got it.
Good question.
That's a good question once a month.
Once a year.
Every year. Any other?
I mean, we only ask that question once a year, I don't mean that Eldred doesn't ask that question.
You said I ask a good question once a year.
Additional questions or discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Item six point six, Appointment of Asbestos Designee A H E R A.
I would like to use this one.
Okay.
I move that Paul Alexander, the Director of Facilities and Operations, be and hereby is, is appointed asbestos designee A H E R A of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year.
Second.
And I asked for this one because I still remember my surprise and delight eleven years ago when I found out that we actually have to officially appoint an asbestos, asbestos designee each year, and I had special joy in this one.
And I second, because I have to mentally keep track of every bit of asbestos in school, this is a prior for this.
Additional questions or discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Item six point seven, Appointment of Data Privacy Officer.
I'll move six point seven, that Zaflyn, Chief Information Officer, be and hereby is appointed Data Privacy Officer of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year.
Second.
Discussion or questions? All in favor? Erin, you just called the question, fantastic, motion carries unanimously. Item six point eight, Appointment of Dignity for All Students Act Coordinators.
Uh, I move that Amanda Verba, Chief Operations Officer, be appointed District DASA Coordinator of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. I also move that the following district personnel be appointed DASA coordinators for each building location of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. That would be Bell Sherman Elementary School, Principal Jeff Tomasic, Beverly J. Martin School, Principal Jacqueline Richardson, Boynton Middle School, Principal Lauren Wright, Caroline Elementary School, Principal Karen Arnold, Keyuga Heights Elementary School, Principal Lisa Sahara Thudie, DeWitt Middle School, Principal Carolyn Gray, Enfield Elementary School, Principal Keith Harrington, Paul Creek Elementary School, Principal Caitlin Bram, Ithaca High School, Principal Jason Trumbull, Lehman Alternative Community School, Principal Deb Peck, Northeast Elementary School, Principal Samantha Little, South Hill Elementary School, Principal Terry Gorman.
Second.
Questions and or discussion?
Yes, um, who would care to explain to our newly appointed colleagues what DASA is and its importance?
I will humbly ask, um, given Amanda's expertise in this area, to provide a brief summary.
Absolutely, DASA stands for Dignity for All Students Act, um, it was put into law in twenty twelve, it is actually a six-hour mandatory course to get any kind of certification through New York State, um, in, uh, whether it be a teaching assistant or aide or a coach or principal, um, and we offer two-hour, uh, refreshers every single year that's actually mandated by law. Those that are coordinators actually receive more training, the law requires that we have policy around dignity act, which is, um, the ability to have schools that feel welcome, uh, for all students to be able to learn undisrupted due to harassment and or bullying and or hazing, um, and or cyberbullying and or discrimination. Um, and so through that law, there are a lot of expectations of us as a school district to be able to, um, have a connection with families and education for families, students, staff, board members, um, and also to just create caring school climates for young people. Uh, we hold young people accountable, we re- report to New York State, we build skills and abilities, we build relationships.
Thank you very much, Amanda. And, uh, for our new board members as well, at some point in time, I'll send an email, um, that explains our policy books, so you can see where some of these policies are, the good thing about using the, uh, system that we use, Board Docs, is that it's searchable, um, so you can search any policy, uh, any meeting, any minutes, agendas, et cetera. Um, but you can find more information there, and we'll point out the policy book, especially as it needs to change.
And I'll just add, previous to, uh, this statewide law, of course, the district was interested in the same things, right? And everybody worked hard to ensure kids were safe and, uh, like they belong, but now there's a, uh, now we have, now we are accountable to the state, right, so now everyone's clear where the buck stops. And I think for parents and community members, that's an important thing.
Any additional questions or discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously, whatever that word is. Item six point nine, Appointment of the Treasurer of Activity Funds and Faculty Counselor.
I'll move six point nine, that the following individuals be appointed to the position as indicated of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year. Ithaca High School, Treasurer of Activity Fa- Activity Funds, Alice Linton, Faculty Counselor, Ja- Jason Trumbull. Lehman A- Alternative Community School, Treasurer of Activity Funds, Kristy Neely Layman, Faculty Counselor, Counselor, Deborah Patac, Boynton Middle School, Treasurer of Activity Funds, Deborah Tudy, Faculty Counselor, Lauren Wright, Whit Middle School, Treasurer of Activity Funds, Tracy Compton, Faculty Counselor, Carolyn Gray.
Second.
Questions and or discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Agenda item six point ten, Appointment of the Workers Compensation Cooperative Board.
I'll move that Amanda Verba, Chief Operations Officer, be and hereby appointed to represent the Ithaca City School District on the Workers Compensation Cooperative Board for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three year and further, that Sidney Wade, Assistant School Business Executive, shall be designated as the alternate representative.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Agenda item six point eleven, Appointment of Community Members to the Audit Committee.
I'll move six point eleven, that Don Waddle and Ann Reichland, upon the recommendation of the Board of Education Audit Committee, be here, be and hereby are appointed as the Audit Committee members effective July one, twenty twenty-two, through to July twenty twenty-three, annual organizational meeting.
Second.
Amanda, could I humbly ask you to explain to folks as well what the Audit Committee is and its responsibilities?
Absolutely, the Audit Committee actually is a, um, mandatory committee, um, through state ed, um, and it, uh, serves and meets four times a year, and it goes through, uh, the daily operations of the school district at all of the meetings in terms of our purchasing behaviors, they check to make sure that we have purchase orders created prior to spending, right, that we are following court policy for all of those, that's the internal auditor networking. We then have another auditor that looks at our operations, our daily operations, and they analyze things such as maybe the way athletics is spent, or time sheets, or vacation payouts, right, so they do, um, all different types of work on auditing those procedures and, and our, uh, our, um, behaviors around, you know, spending money on a daily operation basis as well. And those are topical, and we choose those each year, and then finally, we have the fiscal audit, and the fiscal audit, um, occurs with Insiro, which is a, uh, auditing firm that we have been utilizing for many, many years, we do an RFP every couple of years. Um, and they look at, right now, we actually have given them, uh, we started a couple months ago, all of the financials for the district, right? And so they look at every single, um, element of the way that we spend money through the course of the fiscal year, which today is the very first year of the new one, um, and then we will get an audit report, uh, that we will present at Audit Committee, and then that report, upon exception, um, accepting it by the Board of Education, goes to the State Education Department, the Division of Budget and Finance, and that helps with transparency. We also post those audit reports on our website, and it's, um, for the district operations and also all the extra class funds, right, those treasurers that you just actually, um, uh, you know, uh, said that could, could manage the money for those clubs. We actually have a separate audit report for all the clubs and secondary schools as well.
The district fiscal year is from July one to June thirtieth, so we are beginning today, great, so good luck, Amanda.
Thanks, this is a really fun time to cross over, since it's been a year, it's great.
And not only is the Audit Committee the only committee that a school board is required to have, any other committee we choose to have, but this one is mandated by the state, we are also mandated by the state to have community representatives serve on that committee, and that's what we're doing here.
I'll, I'll just say, um, so we, this district has a pretty high credit rating. A credit rating that allows us to go up through the financial market and do things like be working on our second one-hundred-million-dollar bond, keep our billings intact, can't spend that out of your budget, right? One of the reasons we have the capacity and such a high rating is because of the work of Amanda and her crew, which the auditors verify, we're not perfect, they always find some, they always try to improve our processes in one way or another. There's nobody here that, um, that doesn't accept that as a way to move forward, but it's those tight-knit workings that mean that we have our act together financially, and that undergirds everything that I did.
Any additional questions?
Yes.
So which fiscal year are they auditing, twenty twenty-one?
So it's twenty twenty-two, right, so the fiscal year that just ended yesterday is considered to be the fiscal twenty-two, so you always use the last year of that, because they always cross over, right, so it was twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, and so there are still things that like carryover, right, so things that maybe haven't been delivered to us, but we know that we ordered last year, so it takes a little bit of time for all of those books to close. We also maybe have some lingering payouts that have to happen, um, for time sheets that were submitted that occurred last fiscal year. And so you'll see all through the summer, you're gonna see auditors, uh, in the building, they also work on TST BOSS, because we have, um, a, a business office up there that actually does our payroll, right? Um, and so they'll be working on that, and then the reports will start to come out usually in September, and then October fifteenth is the deadline that the audit has to be done, or the fiscal year will be just close, fiscal year coming to.
Hey, here's a question I have, when they come in now, they won't be able to count the credits that we're supposed to get for transportation while the state aid, does that come, that's in, that's later in the year?
So, uh, everything that came in last year is credited, right, so, um, some of the aides work the year after, some of the aides work within that fiscal year, right, so we track, there are things that we know are, um, you know, that are due to's, right, due to the district, but when you see the audit report and you go through all those charts, it's very, there's all these footnotes throughout that describe all the different ways that aid flows to districts, and it, um, describes sort of like the ones that are in that, that current year, and then the ones that we're anticipating, um, for the next year. That's right, that's right, so they all, the, the audit report is really about the, the revenue flow in and then the expenditure flow out, right, and it's tracking all that for all of the fiscal operations, much more than the hundred and fifty million dollar budget, the general fund, right, it's all of our grants, all of the, um, federal monies that are flowing through, the ARC, the SRR, the title monies, everything is audited, um, all, every dollar that we have.
The state, um, refunds us as well for a lot of things, for a lot of things. We try to make sure, we maximize that by doing as much of that stuff as possible, so we can get sometimes fifty cents on the dollar to do a certain event, so it manages to expand our budget, helps keep certain things healthy, like working buses over there, which are very expensive, et cetera, et cetera. I do.
Sean, I had a question.
Please.
Do we know that Don and, uh, Ann are interested in continuing their position?
That is a great question, uh, Don has been doing this for some time.
Yes.
And has great expertise in, in doing this, and so he's been great, and, uh, this is her sec- this will be her second year.
Yeah, that is correct.
So, but yes, I, uh, we have checked with them to make sure that they would be willing to serve this.
No, I think this would be her third year.
Her third year.
You're right, this would be it.
So, yes, that's, that is a great question, before we get on, it's a fair question. If no other discussion or conversation, uh, all in favor? Yeah, okay, great, so for the board members who are present, it is, uh, passes unanimously. Um, bonding of personnel, agenda item, now we're onto agenda items, um, seven, seven point one pertaining to undertakings.
Okay, uh, I love this, this title, because it's, I don't know what it means, but I'll move that, the Board of Education.
The Board of Education.
We'll find new language in the future.
Oh, this is, okay, this is the bonding one, right? So, okay. Approves the bonding of all persons and positions required by law or regulation to be bonded through a blanket undertaking from a duly authorized corporate charity covering such positions as officers, clerks, or employees. I second.
Questions or discussion?
So this is basically saying that the, our people that hold those positions will be covered and bonded underneath a reputable company.
In case there's any loss.
In case of any loss.
In case there's any loss, right? So it's essentially, think about it as insurance.
Insurance.
And certain positions are higher risk than others, and that's why school districts have this, right?
Thank you, Amanda.
Additional questions, discussions? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We are now on to agenda item eight. These are designations. This is designation of regular meetings and discussion sessions of the Board of Education.
I'll move eight point one, designation of regular meetings and discussion sessions of the Board of Education. That the Board of Education will meet twice monthly on Tuesday, a discussion voting session for in-depth public discussion and a voting meeting. That a combined discussion voting meeting will be held when necessary with prior notice. That the Board of Education meetings will be held at six PM in the boardroom of the District Administration Building, four hundred Lake Street, unless a public announcement is made noting a change or a virtual meeting is required. Second.
Questions and or discussion, yes?
Are we given a timeframe for prior notice? Is it within a week's time, seventy-two hours, or?
Twenty-four hours.
Uh, we are, we are required to post notice within twenty-four hours. For all board members, interestingly enough, from some research that Moira is doing, is the school district is not, the Board of Education is not required to have an agenda, though obviously it's considered to be good practice. But notice of the meeting has to be within twenty-four hours.
And that's the same for a special meeting, and I also discovered that any board member can call a special meeting. And give twenty-four hour notice. So if you're raring to have another meeting.
Should we add, because I know there's confusion out there, says will be held at six PM. Add possibility of going into exact session. There's still ongoing confusion, folks will show up at six o'clock. Then we'll, the true, usually the true meat and potatoes of the meeting is seven-ish. So I don't know how we best convey that to the public.
I think at some point, you know, we, we wanted to make that clear, and there was some legal just barrier to, to basically saying, actually, we probably won't start till seven-ish.
Well, great.
Because the official meeting begins at six, when the board president calls the meeting.
So that's the reality, reality is the meeting starts at six. We can, and we do say in our agenda, we anticipate an executive session. But legally speaking, this is, this is what we're doing. We start, the meeting starts at six when we go into executive session.
So this basically calls to the exact start time of the meeting.
Right.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't go ahead and have public comment at six and then go into executive session if it were necessary?
It's part of the agenda.
Right, it is part of the agenda. And there's a policy that talks about the order of the meeting. I wish I could tell you off the, immediately, and I can find it and let you know. We've been having conversations for the past little bit about what would make the most sense in terms of our meeting schedule. So what I would say is that is a conversation for the policy committee to, to talk about, because that would have to be voted on. It'd have to go through the policy committee to be approved if we were going to change the order of our meetings. But the answer to your question is, yeah, we should, we should look at it.
Yeah, there are, when the public, often the public means little people, right? Because folks come with kids, celebrate or protest. We've had conversations about how cool it would be to get them out of here earlier, right? So they don't have to wait around for us, but there are obviously things we need to discuss in the second session.
And we often don't have student presentations before public comment. And should that actually be a modification of the agenda that's actually, you know,
Yeah.
More formally declared?
And we can say at any point in time, there can be a modification to the agenda before any meeting, as long as there's a majority of approval. What is interestingly, take a look across the state, is that various school districts do various things. Some school districts don't have a public comment period. Some put public comment at the end of the meeting, and some do it at the very beginning as well, right? So there's not a set standard. NISBA, the New York State School Board Association, does not have a recommendation about when it should be. Or last I looked, it may between the past six months, so we can take a look at that. But that's something that I would say should be an immediate discussion for the policy committee, you can add that. Whoever is on the policy committee can take that up.
And we do not have exec session, executive session every week. There are only certain issues which by law may be covered in executive session because most of the business of the board must be conducted in open meetings. So I've noticed in recent months, we have had fewer executive sessions and have, have not always taken as long as they have in previous years. It's, it's impossible to predict from week to week.
So let me add two things. One, the policy that I was talking about, Jill, thank you, Tricia, is policy twenty-three fifty. That's the policy that outlines what our board meetings are like. There are two circumstances where the board does not need to notify the public in advance. Anytime there is a meeting with legal counsel, that does not need to be something that, there not, does not need to be public notice if we are having a meeting with our, our legal team. And we do not need to notify the public when we are having a board development session, though we always have. But there's no public that is allowed in the board development session.
Well, actually, I'm seeing some things about development session that, can't exactly recall, but it's, what I read seemed to indicate that under some circumstances, the public would be part of the development session.
Sure, sure.
Or, you know, to observe it, yeah.
And we can share the things that, yeah.
So we might want to look at that too.
We're going to be looking at everything, I can. Additional questions, discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Designation for, of method for calling regular meetings and special voting meetings.
I'll move they point to that the method for calling regular meetings and special voting meetings be in accordance with ICSD policy twenty-three hundred, calling regular and special meetings.
I second.
And this is policy twenty-three hundred, again, which we would probably look at in collaboration with policy twenty-three fifty. And it does identify that there has to be at least twenty-four hours advance notice, so it does specify in our current policy. Additional questions, discussions? All in favor? Great, so motion carries. Designation as operative, all existing bylaws and regulations.
I move that all existing bylaws and regulations of the city school district, Ithaca, New York, operative at the close of the school year twenty twenty-two. Just, should that be twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two? At this close of the school year, be and hereby are approved for the ensuing year.
Yeah, the year, the year.
So it should be twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two?
Oh, yeah, right.
Last year?
Last year, so it's basically saying it'll carry over.
Are approved for the ensuing year or until action by the Board of Education changes or deletes such bylaws and regulations?
I'll move it noted with.
As I mentioned.
Admitted.
As amended.
Presuming that everyone finds it to be a friendly revision.
It's a, it's a friendly revision, it's really friendly.
That's what, that's what time travel is, that's pretty bad.
Discussion, questions? All in favor? Motion carries. Designation of the Board of Education Standing Committees.
I'll move that the Board of Education shall continue the use of standing committees for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two through two thousand twenty-three as follows. Audit Committee, Curriculum Innovations and Strategic Partnerships Committee, Facilities Committee, Finance Committee, Human Resources Committee, Legislative Advocacy Committee, and Policy Committee.
Second.
Thank you. It's due to math, that's, that's nine of us divided by seven committees.
That usually means that most board members serve at least on two committees. Some serve on three, depending on interest and time. These are the committees, we have done numerous things throughout the years. So for example, at one year or maybe two years, we combined finance and facilities. We found that that was not a productive use of time, given the significant amount of work that each of those committees needed to do. So they were separated. Probably, Eldred, you would know better than me, I want to say five years ago, we created Legislative Advocacy Committee. We were doing some of this work anyway.
I would say it's like seven years ago.
There you go, so someone could do the math better than me.
Another A P P R started.
And, and folks traveling, meeting with our local elected state officials and federal officials, traveling to Albany on a pretty regular basis, and doing some pretty strong advocacy work in the legislative area. And then the other committees, I think, are somewhat self-explanatory. We did rename, it used to be the Curriculum Committee, and it was renamed the Curriculum Innovations and Strategic Partnership Committee. That, I don't know how long ago that was, I won't.
Maybe two or three years ago, three years.
Three years ago.
I'd say three or four, three, forty seven, about that, three years ago, there it is.
And so traditionally, there are three board members on each committee. And we do try to pay attention, if there's going to be an issue where there would be more board members, that it would activate a quorum, then there would require a, a different approach.
But any board member is welcome to attend any.
And all.
And all committee meetings.
So actually, and I could probably use a refresher on this too. We try to, but we often fail, designate them not as committee meetings, but, but as work sessions. And that, I believe, has to do with quarums and decision-making and.
No, no action, no, no board action is ever taken during committee. We only take action during a full board meeting. So the role of the committees is to make recommendations to the full board for discussion and adoption or rejection.
And they're all open to the public. So when folks, and you probably experienced this, running for this term, folks were raising concerns that we passed a budget in the middle of the night. No, hundred fifty million dollar budget, we starting the conversation about that budget?
Last week?
Tomorrow, all right? We haven't already started, so these are ongoing processes. We have had some people who come to these working group meetings and who have been coming for three or four years, with their consistent position. So we definitely invite the public participation.
And I would say that the only committee that ever enters executive session is the Human Resources Committee. Makes sense, because sometimes the Human Resources Committee is talking about the employment history of particular individuals.
Additional questions, discussion?
When do board members get involved in each committee or designate a committee?
Since I'm now realizing that Moira and I are the board officers, we will, we will be sending out email, asking you to respond to Tricia about what committees you are most interested in. We will then meet with the executive team and try to make sure that we comply as much as possible with people's wants, wishes, and talents.
And we'll also be asking about your interest in various liaison roles.
Yep, that will be happening as well. And that is not on here, but we try to have each school have a board member to be the liaison.
And then there are several organizations that board members liaise with, E L I C.
PTA Council.
PTA Council.
I P E I.
I P E I. TST BOSI School Board Advisory Group, that's a group that meets once a month with representatives from the school boards of all the component PST districts. And it used to be, you know, a lunch meeting of the BOSIs, nice sandwiches on. But since the pandemic, I don't believe there's been any in-person meetings, but it's still been virtual.
No, we, we met in person.
Oh, you met, oh, you did, okay.
So I think this is also a school year, we'll, we'll be revisiting things for a number of reasons. One, because it seems like we are coming back to meeting in person through a number of organizations that obviously was disrupted during the pandemic. And so it also gives us an opportunity to revisit what organizations we will have liaisons to, where we are missing out, where we need to be. And we'll talk about that with the next agenda item as well. But for the time being, these are the seven committees that are being proposed. If there's any more discussion about the seven committees in particular?
Oh, another question. So the committees follow open meeting laws like a board meeting?
Yes.
There, there has to be a quorum of board members.
No, there does not have to be a quorum of board members. In fact, we try to make sure, when possible, that there isn't a quorum.
A quorum of committee members.
Of committee members, so two of three committee members need to be there.
Yes, if there's only one board member at a committee meeting, it does not get held. That there is, it needs at least two board members for a committee meeting. And the, with that being said, also the minutes and are not the same requirement as a full board, right? Like we, full board meetings, especially in a hybrid model, require us to have a transcript and minutes. That is not the case for our committee meetings.
So I actually have a question along those lines, and we may not have an answer by now. We have gone back to hybrid meetings for board meetings, but all committee meetings for the past year have, have been virtual. Are, I mean, that's not actually, it's not a policy to vote on, but it might be a conversation.
It is absolutely a conversation for us.
But I thought, under the, the new guidelines for hybrid meetings, that committee meetings can't be all virtual. That we would have to have a full, we would have to have a quorum of committee members in person.
At a physical location.
At a physical location.
That is correct.
Okay, so we will be going back to in-person work sessions.
With a, with a hybrid option.
With a hybrid, a hybrid option, under the same parameters I was saying as a regular board.
That's the way, the way I understood it.
So Jill, does this make any sense?
It is, yeah.
Because we've been struggling with what does a hybrid option mean? And there's some pretty specific legal requirements that you need to have a quorum of the board at a physical location, even while there may be board members who can't participate virtually under extraordinary circumstances. And then there's a loose term, but that's the legal language that's used. All right, there's no discussion about the committees, I'm going to call a question, all in favor? Passing unanimously, these are committees for the upcoming year. We also, a couple of years ago, well, I'll wait. Eight point five designation of standing advisory committees.
I'll read that one. Resolve that the Board of Education shall continue to use the use of standing advisory council for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three as follows. Capital Project Advisory Committee and Early Childhood Advisory Council.
Second.
Discussion and or questions?
Okay, so first of all, has the Early Childhood Advisory Council been meeting?
We met once. I wouldn't say once or twice in the last year. So it's not as robust as when Anne psychologed. But we've had conversations with Dr. Brown about, you know, whether that's still viable, given his work on this issue, but got to answer that question. got to answer that question. I can explain what it is if somebody wants to know.
And then a second um question is, don't we also have some other advisory committees? Code of Conduct? Do we have a do we have another one?
There is a committee on special education.
There is a request for us to have a
Oh, right.
Uh, for us to consider an additional standing advisory committee to address um inclusion accommodations. I think you, Mary, you've been a part of these conversations.
Yes, absolutely. Erin and I have talked about it being a committee versus a work group, and what are the the benefits, the pros and cons of both of those. We are hoping to update our inclusion plan. We've we've accomplished the thing set forth in the last inclusion plan, and would like to strive for greater inclusive practices.
And the board can adopt a standing advisory committee or council at any point in time. So even if we don't approve it today, it's not, we can always come back to it at a future board meeting as well.
So a point of clarification, because we have just um, we've approved all the working groups, and we have discussed the liaison positions.
Yep.
And I have not served on either of these advisory committees or councils.
Yep.
These are board-directed or district-directed? Are they chaired by members of the board?
Uh, it needs at least one board member, and oftentimes is co-chaired by a board member and a community member, a board member, and a district employee. But it needs at least one board member to participate in this. That's not all that's required, um, but oftentimes there are multiple board members, right, so I did not do it as good a job last year, but Rob and I were both on the Capital Project Advisory Committee, and other board members were present, depending on what the conversation was for that.
And we still have a code of conduct advisory committee, no, all right.
No, thank you. My, that was a little too quick. So, just to give folks an update, for the past three years, we have had a Code of Conduct Advisory Council. We believe that we are close enough to a working draft to keep us moving forward with the Code of Conduct, that we will be, um, I think the word that Lily uses, and I think it's phenomenal, that we're at year zero. But we will be hopefully putting out a public hearing for the Code of Conduct, once a couple of additional edits are made, and reminding our community that this is a working and ever-growing and changing document. So at this point in time, we do not need the Code of Conduct Advisory Council, it has done its work, and it will be submitted to the board at some point in time. No, thank you. Thank Dan and thank Lily. And uh, honestly, thank Dr. Anne Burns Thomas as well, who has done amazing work on on this project as well. So that's why it's not listed here. Um, what I will do to the board, and we can also hold off on these committees until the next meeting, uh, because these councils should also include uh, a paragraph about what their charge is. Um, and the paragraphs are not listed here, so.
I'll just say real quick, for the Early Childhood Advisory Committee, the whole purpose is to examine the network of services and opportunities we provide for parents and caregivers regarding young having kids in this community, you know they're significant holes, right, despite our investment in uh, pre-k year, despite Head Start, despite all the other activities, parents are still left with a pretty gaping schedule hole. Some days, they told us it's not worth them even dressing the kids, because they gotta pick them up at eleven or whatever, so the whole idea was to see if we could expand out to the new school, kids prior to kindergarten, and um, see how we can partner with and care providers.
Welcome to K O S, voiceover is on.
All right.
So the the purpose of the standing
Voiceover off.
Or the advisory council, um, is that it's presumed to be somewhat temporary, and that it doesn't require um, as many board members as
That's correct.
as a standing committee.
Yeah, and it provides us an opportunity to include um, multiple, other folks who have expertise in the area to help us negotiate this, so the capital improvement, or the Capital Project Advisory Committee would be a good example, right, that we're working with community folks who also have expertise in the area of finance and capital projects to help us keep an eye as the project continues to to move forward.
And the use of subcommittees within the committees is established or not established here?
Subcommittees within which committee?
Well, for example, um, it seems like under Curriculum Innovations and Strategic Partnerships, that that there would be a subcommittee for early childhood. At least, you know, in in that, the ways that it differs from school-aged curriculum, but I don't know if that's not established or.
No, none of our committees have subcommittees, not a single one has subcommittee. What we've done, part of the reason why we created this process, so for example, the Policy Committee spent a year and a half trying to rewrite the Code of Conduct, realizing that that wasn't always the best use of our time, and you weren't able to get through it, so we created a Code of Conduct Advisory Committee to take that role on. So, and I guess one of the ways to look at it is that, yes, these are subcommittees, right, the Capital Project is a subcommittee of the Facilities Committee, right, the Early Childhood could be considered a subcommittee of the Curriculum Innovations, but but there's.
But they're time-limited and and product-limited.
Yep.
Presumably, right.
Okay.
And they're supposed to, again, they're supposed to each include a paragraph with, that we all, that's the what we're voting on, do we agree that this committee should take on this task?
Okay.
And this timeframe.
But I I can say to your point, if we get the uh, Specialization Committee or Specialization Advisory Council off the ground, I could see that walking into Dr. Go one day, this is a natural connection, but the Early Childhood Advisory Council right now involves so many outsiders that it would be difficult to get it in under our current curriculum committee obligations.
One thing that I discovered, uh, when I came on the board and I was on the Curriculum Committee, curriculum is so gigantic. And um, so over the years, I chaired it for a while, Eldred has chaired it admirably the last few years, is struggling to find focus and what's doable um, for and and appropriate for board members to be working on. It continues to be a a challenge to figure out how to approach this huge thing called curriculum.
That is really the guts of the school.
Yeah, right. But it's also like, you know, the the, for instance, when I was on curriculum, like, you know, I know a lot about uh, secondary language arts, but uh you know, how appropriate is is it for me to be taking a a a really active role in decisions about math?
Me, Mary, and Lily got this.
So, yes, so I, so I would say, summing up your comments, that in the past several years, um the the board, the role of the Curriculum Committee has often been um, to assess the progress of curricular innovation, so we spent a lot of time pre-pandemic, uh, looking at um looking at the detracking of math at the middle school and that curricular shift, and this year, when we finally got back in the schools again, we were taking a look at the new, the phonics curriculum for reading literacy at the elementary level, because um, that that had been a shift, and we visited classrooms, and we heard from teachers about how they thought that was working. Curriculum Committee hasn't been incredible, able to be incredibly active during the pandemic. I I didn't virtually visit any classrooms uh, when I was on, but that doesn't mean it it has to continue working that way. That's the joy of the committees and new members.
And we did have a special education committee, or not committee or council, advisory council, a couple of years ago with Matt Lindau, when we looked into English as a when it was transferred from E S L, English as a second language to English as a new language.
I thought I remembered a previous committee on special education, and I did not realize that had expired, which is why I thought like the board standing committee might be of, would be replicating something that already existed.
Yeah, so Karen, you can speak to this more than I, having participated prior to my time, but that was the nuance between the advisory and and that committee, who, that it was an advisor that established the inclusion plan.
And the community members involved, and I think with the committee, the committees might be specified in our bylaws as to what the board committees are, which will be different from advisory councils. It is specified, some bylaws, they're specified in there, so I haven't read these bylaws, that's the thing.
You said we're tabling this one?
Uh, we didn't say that, but that's something that I would consider, and if there's a motion.
I I think we table this.
A second? All in favor, we we all right, so we are tabling item eight point five, we'll come back, including some conversations about possible other advisory councils, and making sure that these advisory councils also follow our process, which includes specifying what their role is and what the expectations are. Fantastic, so we have that, Tricia. Um, item eight point six, design designation of the delegate to the T S T B O C's Executive Committee, and
Can we move it without a name?
Um, well, we can have a conversation now about who we're interested in doing it and then editing.
Wait, but this is not one of us, I believe, this is different from what Eldred and I have served and Pat long ago served. I believe this is the B O C board, I believe.
That's a Brad Gray.
And that this past year, it has been Brad Gray. Or maybe past two years, I don't, I think it's past, I think it's past couple of years.
Is is he willing to serve, has anyone checked?
I'll move that we table this until further discussion and clarity of the subject. I spoke to her just yesterday, she seemed to be willing, but uh, I I can't say that would give me a definite yes.
I second the tabling. All in favor? All right, item eight point six is also tabled. Um, item eight point seven, board designate for impartial hearings appointment. Pat, you have served on this role?
Um, I will say that I was appointed, I think, the first two years that I was on the board, and in my, in my memory, um, this is an honor that has traditionally gone to a newly elected president. Are, because it involves basically no work at all, so the.
I'll fight you for it.
So, so, so the the impartial, so um, when it um, let me rephrase something, yes, so so when there is, I, is it a, it's a
Due process.
Due process, uh, when it, um, when a hearing has been requested or called an impartial hearing, which um on some matter reflecting district business, um the administration, so who in the administration?
I believe it's Dan, is that correct?
And you should, you
Impartial Hearing Appointment.
You appoint an impartial hearing officer, who, the the person who's actually gonna hear the the uh, issue, and then a member of the board has to come in and sign a paper and sign off on it, and I think I might have done it for three years and.
Upon reviewing.
So
Yeah, you read the paper and you sign it.
I'm gonna do it later.
I I get, I'm realizing Mary did last year, so Doc, who who work, who do they work with in your team?
Well, it has to be Mary going on board.
So Mary, do you want to give us any additional information about what the role is?
Well, I just got called on, I was paying attention to something. And there's just no gracious way out of it.
That that was about
That was just the best policy here.
That was about as gracious as you could imagine, so that was very well done. We were talking about the board designate for impartial hearing appointments. And which board member were would take on that role? Do you have additional information about what that role entails? And you can say no as well.
No.
I I think I can make this really short by saying I'd like to do this, I have experience with this, or I agree with this.
Okay. Oh, great, great, so we're gonna add, if if.
I'd like more information, because hearing approved, is it families, is it um, staff and all?
Yup, yeah, that's.
Because I don't want us to just kind of gloss over things, because the individuals involved need some sort of support too.
Well, we we do not attend the hearings, we, board members are not part of the hearing in any way, shape, or form, and we are not even informed of what the issue is.
Okay.
It's, it is, it is a rubber stamp of district practice in that sense.
To appoint the hearing officer, or who does the
And the hearing officer will do the work, so these, these are not issues that actually the board deliberates over, we just have to certify that the the impartial hearing officer who is presiding over has the approval of the board to do that, and that that does in fact involve an element of trust, because we never get any feedback about those cases, and the cases are few and far between.
We got a few every year, anything that that relates.
There's always a couple of years.
Yeah, yeah. Kind of stuff that I don't think we actually want to know about, but we just need to
People ask it and say somehow.
But do you also have knowledge of the guidelines of it, is there enough notice given to the parties involved in all of that? Do, is there some sort of documentation that states that?
Yeah, I'm 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 now fully present at the present. So yes, there is, and I can provide that, um, as far as our practice and the policy, what we're obligated to do to support, to ensure that caregivers and families know the due process, that's shared, um, anytime a family may reject an I E P, we share those procedural safeguards from the state with them, so they're aware of it, and then collaborate with community partners such as Village, Ithaca Four, and and also we have appointed families and caregivers who have navigated the process that can act as a guide on the side, um but it is also in close collaboration with our municipal council, we go to an impartial hearing, as well as Erica Murat from B O Cs is another person who supports us, both us and the and the family and caregiver.
So and I want to
assisting the hearing.
I appreciate the way in which Karen phrased that, the idea that even the appointment of an impartial hearing officer for lack of a better word, cannot and should not be reversed against, right, that it's part of the process, usually the recommendation comes to us and we don't have much say, but that's, that that's a role, so I under understood. Are you still interested in giving this conversation? Are you still willing to serve?
More than willing.
Very well, sure.
So we, you're gonna move it, Chris?
Yes. Uh, where was I? Okay, eight point seven, uh, board designated impartial hearing appointment, the Board of Education District desires to designate a member of the board as official designate responsible for appointing impartial hearing officers in accordance with the regulations of the Commissioner of Education. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the District hereby designate Jill Tripp as a member of the Board of Education responsible for appointing an impartial hearing officer in accordance with the rationale
No, that's rotational.
Rotation, rotational, thank you both, I caught it afterward. Rotational selection process established by the Commissioner of Education in section two hundred point two E of the regulation of the Commissioner of Education to conduct hearings in the District pursuant to section four thousand four hundred and four one of the educational law.
Second? So so this reminds me, there's, it is, the District is choosing a list of approved impartial hearing officers, and they just rotate through it, so it's not, there's not there's not a set of criteria that that appoints an impart, a specific, a specific impartial hearing officer to a specific case.
Additional questions, discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Jill. Uh, item eight point eight, designation of, designating official depositories, these are the financial institutions that we work with.
Uh, I will move that the following banks and or trust companies be and hereby are designated as the official depositories for the funds of the city school district, Ithaca, New York during fiscal year twenty twenty-two. during fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. Compton County Trust Company, Compton Trust Company, general funds, federal aid funds, payroll funds, school lunch funds, construction and capital funds, extracurricular funds, tax deposit funds, health benefit funds, fiduciary funds, fund investment. M and T Bank, school lunch fund, fund investment. Schumung Canal Trust, fund investment. Nylaf, New York Liquid Asset Fund, fund investment. Five Star Fund Investment, J P Morgan Chase Fund Investment. Key Bank, fund investment, T D Bank, fund investment, Tioga State Bank, fund investment.
Second.
Amanda, is there anything that you'd like to say? I don't know if you're at the party or not.
I'm, I'm here, I'm here. And, um, so it's, one, if this is approved, right? I send this off to our treasurer and as Chris can tell you, as the Chair of Finance for the past couple of years, we may add institutions. I know this feels like there's a lot, but the reality is that school districts have limited opportunities to be able to leverage interest rates. And so we do, we do work with a consult, a consulting firm, three plus one, who actually works with municipalities and school districts to be able to find the best rates. And Eldred spoke to this the other day too, about trying to diversify the portfolio as much as we can, right? Um, to be able to bring in even additional revenue on the monies that we have in what we would consider our savings, right? Um, being mindful of our cash flow to be able to pay our bills and, um, all of our payrolls. So, um, just know that this is a moment in time and that this may evolve as necessary, but we always would update via finance committee and then that will go to the board meeting.
Just, uh, you know, so looking at this, it would appear that in terms of, you know, who handles, you know, a lot of our accounts, it's our local Compton's Trust Company. Um, so they've got a lot of our money sitting there. Um, I'm just curious. And so the others are investments except for M and T Bank also is listed as having money from our school lunch fund. And why is that?
So M and, so remember that school lunch fund, the C fund, it's independent, right?
Uh huh.
And so typically, uh, our treasurer, and they get audited, um, but our treasurer supports them as sort of an independent entity. And so, um, what you're seeing there is really tradition. Um, and so we are sort of working with them, um, to sort of build, um, capacity around analysis of other institutions and it may be M and T and it may not be.
Uh huh.
Um, but their funds often have to have a lot of liquidity, right? So they have to be able to access them and move them out due to payments for commodities. And so it's a little bit different from some of the things that maybe trend a little better over the course of time.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions, discussion?
Um, just more points of clarification and information for our new colleagues. Couple, couple.
Years ago now?
We decided to put the money up so we could make all of our school lunch programs free. Uh, so I took that budget from X to, I think we had to add another one point five million or something like that a year. So it's not an insubstantial amount of funds now.
So, I, I think you're not.
Some schools.
Exactly, some, some schools.
Yep, so some were, some, so the, so a few years ago, some schools qualified, right? Due to free and re, free and re, free and reduced lunch rates. And then due to the pandemic, right, they made all of it free. And then there's been a lot of conversation about what actually is going to happen with that. Right now, it doesn't, it, it, we don't know if that, um, program is officially finalized and we're going to go back to, um, some schools having the ability to offer, um, free lunches to all based on their rates for their building. Um, so there's more to come. I believe that in August, we're actually, um, having Beth, um, join us for the finance committee meeting because there are some conversations about school lunch rates, um, and breakfast rates and also what Eldred was alluding to. So, um, right now in the current budget, we do sustain some operations of school lunch. We actually do a transfer over to school lunch mainly for the benefits of their employees, right? So that does, it alleviates their budget a little bit to be able to pay for what their fringe and benefits rates, right? Like health insurance, their E R S, uh, which is employee retirement. Okay? Yeah.
There's no additional questions, discussion? All in favor? Fantastic, moving on to item eight point nine.
Oh, I'll take this one.
Go ahead, Maureen.
I move item eight point nine, that the Ithaca Journal be designated as the official newspaper for the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York during the school year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three for the publication of all legal notices and such other data as required to be published by law and for which the same may be qualified to act. Second.
Questions, discussion?
We have to, I just to explain, we have to designate a daily newspaper and that's why it's the Ithaca Journal. Even though I strongly believe that they should take Ithaca off the title of that newspaper since they do not publish pretty much anything about what's going on in Ithaca.
There, there was something in the last two days. Uh, is it still the legal requirement that it must be a print news, a daily print newspaper?
I have asked that question and I'm still waiting to get this clarification, but I believe at this one time the answer is yes, it's supposed to be a daily print. I would presume that will be changing sometime soon.
Well, I. I was gonna ask why not one four eight five O dot com, but I'm not sure if they come up.
I don't.
I.
Well, and they're not print.
They're not print.
I, I think the criteria is antiquated and it's not caught up to.
Well, also, for instance, you know, the Syracuse newspaper, Post Standard, does not offer a daily print edition anymore. It's like three days a week. So, yes, how, how, like, we, we just take our next year's Ithaca Journal subscription and um, that's always an after space, definitely here. And, um, and, you know, we have not been told that it will cease daily publication, but if it does, we have no other local alternative. And I don't know where the other.
Right, a lot of communities find themselves in this situation as well. So I will follow up with our legal team. I'll respond back to all board members so everyone has the information. Uh, this is, for example, the place where we post notice of our, um, public hearings, uh, where we post, uh, notice of the upcoming budget vote, um, right? That this is the publication that we're, we're required, just like the publication where we notify the public of what's taking place in various ways. So sometimes it's thirty days, sometimes it's forty five days, but this is, this is where we're at.
And we do use other means in addition to the Ithaca Journal. This is what we're required to do today.
And, and so, um, in terms of board members, are, who is the media designated coverage for? If there's any time a journalist or Bosse journalist comes to any one of us, what, when is that?
This is a.
Is that directed to that?
This is a great topic of, um, ongoing debate for our board in particular. Uh, NISBA recommends that any media requests go through, I'm not saying this for me, but go through the board president. Um, that has historically been what their practices. Uh, the Ithaca City School District has, um, been working to create a public information office, um, which would include folks, uh, who we would answer these questions as well. And we are still trying to find a process that works for all of us about what happens, not just when we get messages from members of the media, but when all board members, for example, receive an email. And is there a district, a, a board response or individual responses? The reality is we have not worked that out, um, just to be real. That we're, I think that would be part of our board development is to try to come up with a process that works for everybody, especially when there's disagreement. Especially when some board members feel that should be communicated this way and other board members feel it should be communicated another way. There's also another tension point, maybe I shouldn't say tension point. There's also, uh, sometimes some difference between what the board wants to communicate and what, um, administration may want to communicate as well. So we have, there's a number of questions that we have to have some conversations about. For the time being, around media requests, um, I don't know that I recommend it goes. I think we should hold on to the idea that it goes at least to the board president to be informed or to the board officers, I should say, to be informed. And we can still work out what that.
And historically, the board officers have sent out to the full board, this is our, um, pending response. Please give us feedback, any adjustments before it goes out.
Or board members have written to the board officers saying, I recommend.
Yeah.
This is our response. Can we all come to an agreement on that as well? We had a Google Doc at one point in time, trying to track who's going to respond to what email or in which way, uh, yeah, that did not work well. Um, we have to find an efficient process. And I've been talking to other school districts, um, and I, their process is, um, very hierarchical and I'm not sure that I'm a, a fan of, of that process.
Just as Ithaca.
Yes, right.
Thank you, Jill.
Would this be a good time for an introduction, Dr. Brown? We're talking about communications and don't we have a new member of our staff here?
New member of, uh, yeah, no.
Um, no, not today, okay. Did we want to, we, we approved an appointment at the last meeting.
Yeah, the, yeah, uh, Ms. Katie Hart will be beginning on August the first.
August, okay.
Um, as a public information specialist. And then we have a communications coordinator, Margaret Deveron, will be starting, uh, next week, July seventh. So we do have a team that's formed.
And the third person.
And, and joining, uh, Casey Banks, who's been on for.
Pitcher man.
For several years now. So we have a three-member team. And I'll remind the folks who are listening, um, we have been partnering with, uh, both, uh, both City Bosse's and we had a contract with them to help us with communications of the past three, four years now? So we transitioned those funds, uh, that we were sending off to do an external contract to now bring it, bring that service in-house.
And I guess, you know, we also, there have been several, uh, events that have driven home our need for a more coordinated communication approach. When, uh, we had a couple of our schools on lockdown or not lock in, you know.
The need and the nature of communications has transitioned pretty significantly over the decade, I think. I mean, as I'm thinking about this meeting, remember back in two thousand and eleven, folks were questioning and upset that we were thinking about having a twenty thousand dollar contract to do communications for the third party. And so much so, we had to go on the radio, we had to have deep conversations about why does a school district need any type of communications coordination whatsoever? And here we find ourselves today with folks demanding information almost, um, in a dynamic way, um, as events are happening, i.e., uh, lockdowns. So we have to invest, uh, probably, probably underfunded and under-resourced. Um, I think we did an analysis, I think, five years ago, most small city school districts were spending a million or a million and a half dollars each in communications as a department. And at the time, we were doing none of that. So this is something we're growing. But also growing the understanding of the community about the need for this role, these roles.
The only thing I would add is to, to emphasize the idea of a dynamic communication approach. Yeah. Um, so more than just a press release, right? So we're trying to figure out how to do this work collaboratively where we can all agree, at least all be informed. That's up to another problem. Um, that oftentimes not all board members have the same information. And so, um, it's, it's an area of growth for us, there's no question about it.
I will say, uh, I will give Maureen the credit. She's due a lot of the difficult communications she's taken on. Like not just as our master English agent, but because she has so many relationships in the community. Sean has relationships with a particular area of our community because he taught there. I have a particular, so we try to respond where it makes sense, but this is our master. You're, as of right now, it's overwhelming.
So I know we're talking about newspapers, I'm gonna get us back here in a second, right? But the last thing is we oftentimes have to decide as well if we're signing something with all board members or signing something, um, where one board member signs, um, in response on behalf of all board members, that's also that.
I just want to see something in the public. Think about it, when's the last time we got to celebrate our athletes through our scholars in some publication, some local publication? Been ten years since I saw our scholar athletes giving their props in our local rags. You know, so for just that reason, we want, we need some communication, much less the more serious stuff.
It's gonna happen. So it's been moved, it's been seconded, robust conversation. Can we call the question? All in favor? Unanimous, excellent. Uh, agenda item eight point ten, designation of signers.
I will move that, uh, the Ith, um, that Emily Schiff as treasurer and Sidney Wade as assistant school business executive individually be and hereby are designated the authorized signers for the disbursement of all funds of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York during the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year.
Second.
Questions, discussion? All in favor? Fantastic, unanimous. Uh, eight point one one, designation of internal auditor.
I'll move that the board designates Questar Three Bosse's as internal auditor for the Ithaca City School District for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year.
Second.
This is part of the conversation we had earlier with Amanda. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor? Absolutely unanimously. Uh, eight point one two, designated receivers of money.
I'll move that the following positions be and hereby are designated receivers of money for the school year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. Treasurer, Ithaca City School District, school treasurer, Ithaca High School, school treasurer, Lehman Alternative Community School, school treasurer, Duitt Middle School, school treasurer, Boynton Middle School, library, librarians and library clerks, school secretary, all schools, cafeteria cashiers, tax collector, tax clerks, gateperson, purchasing agent, chief operations officer, school lunch clerk, transportation director, wellness and athletics officer, athletic facilities manager, athletic equipment manager, director of child nutrition.
Second.
Questions, and the words, discussion? All in favor? Absolutely unanimously. Eight point one three, designation of independent auditor.
Uh, I move that this board designates in steroid company, CPA's as independent auditors for the Ithaca City School District for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year.
Second.
Again, this is part of the conversation we had with Amanda about the audit committee. Any additional questions or discussion? All in favor? Absolutely unanimously. Eight point one four, designated custodians of money.
Um, I move that the following positions be and hereby are designated custodians of money for the school year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. Treasurer, Ithaca City School District, school treasurer, Ithaca High School, school treasurer, Lehman Alternative Community School, school treasurer, Duitt Middle School, school treasurer, Boynton Middle School, school secretary, all schools, cafeteria cashiers, tax collector, tax clerks, purchasing agent, director of child nutrition, transportation director and wellness and athletics officer.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor? Absolutely unanimously. Um, now on to agenda items nine, nine point one, authorization for the use of telephone, wire and electronic banking services.
I'll move that we approve that the Board of Education authorize Emily Schiff as treasurer and Sidney Wayne as assistant school district business executive individual to utilize telephone, wire and electronic banking services at the Ithaca City School District, designated official depositories during the school year twenty twenty two through twenty twenty three.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor? Absolutely unanimously. Nine point two.
I move that Trisha Barres, first, as clerk of the City School District, Ithaca, New York, and Amanda Burba, the chief operations officer, be authorized to sign agreements, reports and claims to the State Education Department in connection with the operation of National School Lunch Program in the schools of the City School District, Ithaca, New York for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Were you, were you in favor?
Yes.
Absolutely unanimously.
I just pulled the not present.
Uh, agenda item nine point three, authorization, certification of payrolls.
I'll move nine point three, that Robert Van Kuren, the chief human capital officer, and or Amanda Burba, Burba. I'll move nine point three that Robert Van Kuren, the chief human capital officer, and or Amanda Burba, Burba, chief operations officer, be and hereby are authorized to certify all payrolls prepared on behalf of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Second.
Discussions or questions? All in favor? That includes Eldred, passes unanimously. Uh nine point four authorization of cooperative bidding.
Uh I move that this board agrees to join with other school districts and BOCs in New York State in cooperative bidding as authorized by general municipal law, section one one nine dash zero, for the purpose of selected items for used in and by this district, and that the clerks of the participating districts and or BOCs be authorized to act as agents for the preparation of specifications and for the receiving of sealed bids submitted and answered there too. And that the board agrees to abide by majority decision of the participating agencies on quality standards. That unless all bids are rejected, it will award contracts according to the recommendations of the majority of participating agencies if it desires to do so. And that after the award of contracts, it will conduct all negotiations directly with the successful bidder.
Second.
Amanda, does it make sense for you to just talk briefly about our cooperative bidding and the work that we do?
Sure. So this is specific right to the uh the BOCs working on our behalf. So we actually contract with uh DCMO BOCs and other BOCs as needed to, it's purchasing power, right? So the more folks that jump into a bid, if we all need particular products, right, you're able to leverage those funds so that we know that if twenty-two districts need something, you're getting a better price, right, versus if we did it wrong. So the power of cooperative um bidding and purchasing, it is mandated by law, it's very prescribed, right? You have to be very public, transparent, you have to be able to get those bids sealed, that that sort of alleviates any kind of like relationships, right, to to leverage any kind of awards being given. So that's really what that is. And so this is specific sort of to those supplies. And then obviously talks about the standards that we would use. Um for example, if somebody wins a bid and it's not a good product or they um you know, maybe didn't uh meet the needs as described, it also provides that procedure as well for that.
Additional questions?
I I remember over time, we've had some pretty tough conversations within this group about whether or not we would allow bidding to be met by folks who deal with incarcerated individuals. And whether or not we would allow local individuals who can prove they can meet our needs to have some kind of advantage is not the right word, but preference, maybe, priority. And I honestly can't, it's been a long time. So I don't know where we are with those, but I remember tough conversations about that. So maybe once we're over this and we get into finance, you can refresh. Where we stand on that.
Definitely talk about what the laws allow us to do.
That's where we always ended up.
Yeah, that's right.
What was allowable, what was not allowable.
Yes, and and there are great people who can advise us on that at a financing and that community agenda item.
Yes. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor? That is everyone but Mr. Malcolm, who's not here. Nine point five authority to invest funds.
I move nine point five that the Board of Education delegates the authority to invest school district monies to Amanda Burba, the chief operations officer, and or Emily Schiff, the treasurer in accordance with sections one six oh four dash A and one seven two three dash A of the education law and any other pertinent regulations.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor? Is everyone present at the conference?
Uh I'll move, I'm sorry.
No, please.
I'll move nine point six authorization of petty cash funds. Uh that the um Board of Education hereby authorizes the establishment of petty cash funds for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three in the amounts listed and appoint the designated positions as custodians of funds. And all of the, oh, it's just two. Ithaca City School District treasurer, one hundred dollars, Ithaca City School District transportation director, one hundred dollars. Second.
Discussion or questions? Amanda, if I'm not mistaken, we have had some conversation about the amount of money?
Yes, we we like to keep it as low as possible, right? So any any cash is risk, um right? So that's why you see very few stewards of actual cash in the district. Um and again, these are good things like, so for example, a transportation, if some people were to go on a trip, right, and we knew that they needed to, they were gonna be a full day and they needed to get a meal instead of like getting the district credit card, it might be something like this. Or they use their own money, like we have to track everything, everything that comes in and everything that goes out. So we we would, we like to keep things small and we like to keep things few um when it comes to petty cash.
Any additional questions or discussion? All in favor? Is everyone, except for Mr. Malcolm, who's not in the room. Um authorization of cell phones for select employees.
I will move Board of Education recognizes that select district employers will be required to carry district-owned cell phones in order to meet their job responsibilities. Such phones should be provided only when a less costly alternative, for example, paper radio, that is not available or it is not appropriate in the circumstances. Do I have to read the rest of it?
I think we will get the point, if that's okay by.
All right.
Yeah.
Question?
Yes.
Um oh, second and then question. Um so it says a list of job titles requiring district-owned cell phones shall be maintained and that it will be um you know, it will be reported to the board for its approval at its reorganizational meeting. Do we have a list?
Um, no, but I, this is also a policy that Amanda and I have been having a conversation about that will be updated. So um if we can table it, uh because it's probably gonna change. If you look, the last approval date was two thousand and nine. And the idea of cell phones has gone from being a luxury to an absolute necessity.
Right.
So uh we are well behind in this policy in particular. It's an outdated policy that we, that Amanda and I already know, we've already been in conversation about, it has to be updated. And I think our auditors actually told us, asked us to update it as well.
Absolutely.
I move we table uh item nine point seven authorization of cell phones for select employees.
Does that mean that our select employees won't get cell phones for the month of July though and that they might need them?
I think what it means is that the policy from last year will carry over until we make some fundamental change.
Okay, right.
I'll second that, that motion to table. All in favor of tabling? Again, unanimous with Mr. Malcolm, right? Um up next is our consent agenda. Um our consent agenda, we do not normally go through each item individually. Usually the items are, for lack of better word, packaged together. Um we will highlight key things. This is regularly uh in our consent agenda, usually includes the personnel report, it includes um student student services that are provided.
Minutes of.
It usually include sometimes the moving of money between accounts or uh things that come from the finance committee or facilities committee. Um you can see here, though, this consent agenda also includes um folks who will be acting principals uh when an administrator is not in the building or not present. And so you'll find that there's one for the high school, for Boynton, I mean, it goes through for um all of our secondary schools and and elementary schools as well. So um.
Question about that?
Yep, happy to. We haven't, we haven't moved your second, but let's talk first and see.
Well, I I noticed that the acting principal uh are only designated in the buildings where there is an associate principal. Uh what does it mean for the buildings where there is not an associate principal?
In the past, the um had a superintendent designate, that was the language, but I don't, we haven't named any persons.
Right.
That brings up a great question, because I don't see why we have that.
It's it's not here.
So it should, there should be something that says in all other buildings, it'll be superintendent or designate as acting principal.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
So I think that is something that should be added to the August meeting.
Yeah, August meeting.
Yeah.
Some language about acting principals in schools that are not listed here.
We do have a July meeting schedule.
We, oh, is it the end of July?
And it's July twenty-nine, twenty.
Twenty.
Who did such a thing?
July what? It's probably.
Twenty-six.
I will not be able to attend.
Today's the first.
Uh neither was.
No, it wouldn't be twenty-six, it would be.
So get a different date, you know.
Yeah, yeah, no, I will do this.
Okay.
We'll be in, but anyway, whatever the next meeting is, and um we'll add that language along with the table items, which automatically come up to the next uh board meeting as well.
Yeah, okay. Right.
So have we, no, no one has moved the consent agenda?
I'll move the consent agenda.
Are are we moving it to table or is it?
No.
No, no, we're moving.
Oh, oh, I will second the consent agenda then.
Um.
Uh wait, we're approving the minutes. I, when I last walked, I hadn't seen the minutes, but they're from the last meeting. So uh I wasn't that late. Sure.
Um.
Well, folks are.
Remember, we comprised a quorum, five of us.
Oh, oh.
You.
Uh that one, that one.
Well, we are searching. Let me just add that um consent agenda does cover a lot of some.
Now I'm concerned.
But when we are in a tight procession, we discuss these and if somebody puts stronger than that, we can have something out of that. Consent agenda, aren't you a different part of the agenda? We will consider it, done with.
And there's still the opportunity for discussion, questions, well, any consent.
Yes.
Um agenda item. Um I will say that we are still working through um minutes for meetings.
Right.
Um the law has changed substantially in COVID, um where we are not required to keep minutes the ways in which we have historically, that we um publish a transcript. And we um were required by law to publish a transcript as the minutes. And we have included on our transcript, um because usually something like Zoom uh automatically transcribes, uh but it is regularly uh not correct, right? So it does not give you the best job of.
Right, a question, right. A question about that. So um when, like the last meeting was not a high-person meeting.
That's correct.
Um, does Zoom, but we did have, no, we didn't have, well, we we were broadcasting by Zoom.
Yeah.
Is a transcript created under those circumstances?
We weren't broadcasting by Zoom.
Or we, I mean, yeah, people could watch the meeting, they just couldn't participate in it.
We were broadcasting via, by uh.
We can, we can ask, we can actually get it, okay.
I was gonna say that I was told for in-person meetings that we go back to do a minute.
Right.
But if a transcript is requested, we can provide a transcript.
Right. And so there is a transcript from the last meeting?
There is a transcript from, via Zoom.
Via Zoom.
We we were using an outside source, but that was only way it was hybrid.
Uh huh, right, okay. All right. So I I'm not able to access the minutes, because I have trouble getting internet access here, if I have to figure out.
So is, are you asking us to do something about the minutes to remove item?
Well, I don't, I can't approve them if I haven't seen them.
Understood.
So I I could abstain from the consent agenda or.
Or what we could do is move the minutes to the, we can table the minutes.
Yeah, why don't we table the minutes, let's do that.
Until the next board meeting.
Yeah.
Are you making that motion?
Yes, I move the motion to table the minutes, approval of the minutes of the uh um June twenty-eighth uh monthly discussion and voting meeting until the next meeting. Second.
All in favor of tabling the minutes? All opposed?
I abstain, yeah.
Abstain, yeah. Now, brings us back to the consent agenda. Sure, we are already out of order.
Oh, okay, yeah. So so the the consent agenda has been moved and seconded.
Any other additional questions or conversations? All in favor of the consent agenda? Passes unanimously, and Mr. Malcolm is here as well. School district business, uh item fourteen. Uh this is the adoption of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three um meeting agenda or meeting schedule. Um we published this, it is uh definitely able to be changed um for a variety of reasons, which we've done before. Uh for example, schools cancel on a particular day because of a snowstorm, we usually do not have a meeting on those days, right? Uh or if we need to add an additional meeting, um are historically, we should have talked about this previously, but you can see it in the schedule as well. Um I think the first Tuesdays of the month have historically been policy and HR committee. The second Tuesday is a full board meeting, the third Tuesday is facilities and finance, and I'm missing.
And uh legislative advocacy meets in before a regular uh board meeting,
The second Tuesday. Yeah.
which would be the third or the second.
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday.
And then curriculum instruction is before the fourth.
The board. And then the third.
Right, so committee, full board meeting, committees, full board meeting.
With facilities and finance.
Oh, right. Right.
On months that we have five Tuesdays, uh we usually try to hold those before board development sessions. And I would anticipate that we will have board development sessions this this year. So no one has moved.
Oh, I move um, I move adoption of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three board meeting schedule as presented.
Second. Discussion, questions? All in favor?
Maybe I'll just uh say that um you know, some of these Tuesdays where there have been some of like, for instance, I have been on HR and policy, so that first Tuesday, I have a long meeting day. And then those who are in uh the committees that meet prior to a regular board meeting, they have a long day. However, before we landed on this schedule several years ago, our our committee work sessions were like all over the map. Uh any day of the week and um and particularly for our staff, it was difficult. And this has made it much easier for the staff to know that Tuesdays are meeting day, and it's made it easier for board members, it's Tuesdays.
And for the community as well, they have meetings on Tuesdays.
Yeah.
Yeah, my my first six years on the board, I was, I was sometimes be out two or three evenings a week um doing board uh related work. And I will say personally that if we had not moved to this Tuesdays-only schedule, I would not have run for a third term. Um it it really was raining and in my experience, this has been much more manageable.
Your friends and families will learn quickly that you don't exist in this.
Tuesday evenings.
Tuesday after one.
What you do before the minutes. Uh if there's no more discussion, um all in favor? Fantastic, it passes unanimously. Um the last item on our agenda is item fourteen point two vacancy. Um we had a uh a long-serving uh board member, Nicole Fave, has submitted um resignation from the board. Uh it means that we have a vacant seat. Um we will uh address Nicole's contributions uh and commitment to the district at a later date. Uh but what we thought would be important, especially for our new board members, to understand um the possible options for a vacant seat. Um when there's a resignation, uh the board can do one of three things. Uh it can leave the seat open and vacant to the next election. That's one option. It can hold a special election to fill the seat. Um that's another option. Then the third option is the board can appoint a person to serve for a one-year term until the next election. And then the person have to be whoever was the elected from there. Um in terms of appointments um or possible appointments, boards have done a variety of things. Uh they have appointed the next highest vote getter, depending on how close it was to an election. They've appointed prior board members who have board experience, given that it's a one-year term. They've held.
Or or even less of them.
Or even less, right? They've held special processes, interview processes. Um but the reality is about the appointment, the board decides the appointment. Uh the the board decides whatever way they want to go. So those are the three options. Um we are not going to take any action today. Um we wanted to make sure everyone had information to understand what the possibilities are. We'll put it on July something uh. We'll put it on July something uh, agenda to have a conversation about what is the best path forward. Um, or if the board so wishes, we can also hold a special meeting to address this issue as well. So we'll have some of this conversation, we'll get some feedback about what the next process is. Yes, someone?
I'll just say, historically, certainly in my time on the board, we have had vacancies. Um, we've sometimes left things open, like Kelly Evans uh, has been, she resigned, I forget when, but we left it open at that point. Um, to my knowledge, we've never held a special election.
That is correct. Elections are expensive.
It doesn't mean we can't, but it doesn't mean that, that we never have.
That's right.
Right.
Right, we have never had, not in my time on the board, and we've had, um, you know, a multiple vacancies for a variety of reasons, right? So, so yes.
Any special election, the person winning that election is still on your one-year term?
My, no, that's the difference.
Okay.
Right.
If there's a special election, the person would complete the term of the person who, who bigoted.
And that is.
And that is.
To twenty twenty four.
That is to twenty twenty four. If there's an appointment, the person only serves to the next election, which will be May of twenty twenty three.
Yeah.
Right.
Or it could be vacant until May of twenty twenty four.
Um, I believe I can't remember what it is, but if we were to decide on a special election, it has to be held within a certain amount of time, or there's some time constraints there.
Yes, yeah, yeah, there are some time constraints to do that. Uh, to at least announce a special election, which also requires public notice well in advance, I think it's eighty-five days. Tricia, would you have that?
So.
So are there questions about process, I, the point of that was just to give information, was not to, for us to, to make any decisions.
Is it appropriate to make comments at this point, or you just wanna just leave it out there? Some of us have known for, what has it been, two days, three days? About, yeah, so this is, this is very, um, this is very sudden, yeah.
It's new, it's new for everybody.
Yeah.
I think it'd be best, from my own personal perspective, it'd be best for us all to sit with the information and think about the best way to proceed, and we'll, we'll follow up. So for all board members, you'll be getting an email from um, probably Tricia or more, myself, about committee preferences, about liaison preferences. Um, we will follow up with the tabled items at upcoming board meeting, and uh, there'll probably be some additional information that happens. I hope for our new board members that your, your ICSD emails are working. Um, we try to use our ICSD, ICSD emails. Um, it's important to say to everybody that those emails, anything that is sent, doesn't matter whether it's your ICSD email or not, is um, uh, something that can be foiled. And so there'll be times when um, the member of the board will say, this is not appropriate for an email conversation, we need to have this in public, right? So that, that will happen at some point in time for all of us, so listen to that. Anything else?
So we will receive ICSD emails prior to receiving any committee liaison requests.
And you should have an email set up today, not a, I mean, double check.
Yes, and if not today, we'll, we'll, we'll work on that.
It should be, and talking to me.
And.
What does that mean? Oh, yeah, we'll talk about that, we'll talk about it, sorry, go ahead, I apologize.
And does the board um, have board insurance, the board members?
Meaning board insurance?
Like, what if there exists insurance in case any, any um, liability?
Yes. Not that we request.
Yes, yes, yeah, we, we absolutely do, and um, also includes uh, access to legal counsel if it's connected to your role as a school board member.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have heard this over the years and never checked it out legally myself, but I have confidence in the folks who are telling us this, that we are only board members when we're at this table, or in a committee or an exec session, when we leave this building, we are not operating under the umbrella of being a board member, so that's an important distinction to make. Uh, and I don't know if our insurance still covers us when we walk out, but that's always been my assumption based on that information.
Uh, can you clarify, please?
Won't stop him?
What?
It wasn't fair with life, man, so I said.
No, I'm here, I was here. I don't know, I don't know what more I can add, Eldred, uh, Eldred said it, I think it was worth forwarding, I said it, it is uh, uh, the, you know, the difference between a city council person, for example, is there a council person twenty-four hours a day for their term? And for the new members, as you learn when you go through the school board association training that all new members have to take, uh, your role really is when the, when the gavel strikes, you're board members, and when it strikes to end the meeting, you are private citizens again, not that the work doesn't continue, but just keep that in mind as you go into buildings or talk to employees, that, you know, you're a private citizen during those conversations, um, and other times when you're here, you're a board member.
And the last thing I'll say about the um, orientation and the training that you go through from NISBA, what I've heard from multiple new board members is that um, it's a great beginning, but it's inadequate. So please feel free to ask questions, we may go through things a little bit slower the first couple months, just to make sure that folks have had their questions answered, but um, NISBA is a great organization with, you know, fantastic information, but the required training is not gonna give you all the information that you need, and particularly because each school district, over seven hundred in New York State, does things radically different. So learning what we do here, or even questioning what we do here is always helpful for fresh eyes, like, should we do it this way, should we try to do some changes? So with that being said, a two-and-a-half-hour rework meeting is not too bad, we've had longer, we've had shorter, uh, but uh, if it's good by everybody, I will close the meeting and wish everybody well on a ninety-degree Friday. Enjoy, enjoy. Welcome both of you again, yes.